Can you get a roll call please?
Bart Mietman? Steve Skaggs?
Yeah.
Sandy Eric?
Here.
Dane Nielsen?
Here.
Jason Sampson?
Here.
Brian Hanson?
Here.
First item is approved the agenda?
First approved.
Second. Question Dane, second Brian, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, please vote.
There's one more yet. There it goes.
Good job Steve. Okay, agenda is approved, takes us to financial planning review for Fieldhouse and Waste Water Treatment Facility, Michael Maloney and DA Davidson.
Hi folks, and Karen was one of my people to share my screen here over the Zoom as well.
If you go to the green, if it's not there, then the green at the bottom shows share screen in the middle, there's like green. I think you can change permissions there.
And you now?
Yes, thank you. Alright folks, I am sharing the first of two sets here for you today, thank you for your attention. My name is Michael Maloney from DA Davidson. I've done work as a financial consultant for the city for a number of years. Today I'm going to be addressing two items in this session. We'll start with the Fieldhouse project financing review and then we'll move on to the wastewater treatment plant. Can everybody see my screen alright?
Guys able to toggle over, do you have to do it on your computers?
Yeah.
Get advice and all too.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, just to kind of start her here to make sure we're on the same page. You know, the Fieldhouse project has been long discussed but has been part of a long-term capital improvement plan and facility plan for the city. So, this has been a several year process, the city identifies a five-year CIP that aligns with the long-term planning initiatives overall in terms of how do we pay for what we're doing? So, rather than today being a one-off discussion, today is a culmination of multiple years of work by the city staff and council to this date. Couple of the goals here overall, really any type of capital plan is about investing in city infrastructure and improving the city's services. So, one of the things we've tried to do here is have a big picture approach about how to pay for certain projects and understand what that impact may be. I think the three pieces that we'll harp on here are authority, capacity and repayment. And making sure it's understood, we have all our ducks in a row before proceeding in any certain process for a particular project. So, a big picture goal in any capital project is to, one, efficiently implement that project, but also to minimize the impact taxpayers and ratepayers to the extent possible. There are certain projects that a city wants to do and a certain set of projects that you need to do. So, making sure that we're aligning particular revenue streams or financing sources are important as well as lining those up with appropriate repayment time periods for those projects. Really just big picture there before I get into some details on the specific Fieldhouse project. As it relates to the Fieldhouse project and financing, mentioned this has been a several year process. I think the biggest reason for today's discussion is that the city has worked through the fundraising and other funding opportunities to cover the cost of the project and is now at a time to be able to go ahead and proceed with the bidding for the project. So, my discussion today is just focused on what those financing parameters are, next steps and action items from there. Again, this has been a multi-year process, so as part of the city's urban renewal plan, the Fieldhouse project is located within a city of renewal area and has already been designated as a potential project for that area. So, some of those initial administrative steps have already been completed. And that means that when the city gets bids and then goes out for some financing here, we only have a limited number of administrative steps with a public hearing to authorize any necessary financing depending on the size of the ultimate project cost. So, in terms of scenario assumptions, just to break down here on this slide, about $8 million is the estimated total Fieldhouse project cost, that's an all-in cost and again, the project does need to be bid. Of that, in terms of how to pay for it, the identified items are four and a half million from the general fund balance, the Gates Hall sale proceeds, approximately $1.3 million of fundraising and I've highlighted there, you know, a good chunk's already been received and the balance of pledges is a five-year period. $400,000 from the county, $25,000 from Story County Community Foundation and a grant, and then the $424,000 cat grant. Basically, the shortfall there is about $451,000 for the city to cover. And then additionally, approximately $837,000 for the last four years of fundraising pledges. Basically, the city's going to have to be able to pay contractor invoices before those come in and kind of play bank here a little bit. Now again, this is all subject to the actual project being bid but outlines the overall concept of the project and some of the sources and uses. I'm going to pause here as this kind of wraps up the first half on the Fieldhouse before getting into some details, but want to make sure this is all tracking with everybody, any questions, anything I'm missing, Jordan, Karen, anyone else? Please feel free to jump in if anything here is not ringing bells. Either we're good or my audio cut out, either way, we'll proceed. I mentioned the three main hits here, right, any project for financing, authority, capacity, repayment. I'm not going to restate this when we talk about the treatment plant project, but the concepts are the same. So, the first key is legal authority to proceed, whether that's through a public hearing or a referendum. The second piece is capacity, can we afford to do this under legal limits with certain timing considerations? Then the actual repayment of revenue and financing sources. Again, we've talked a little bit about this at a high level, because the city's gone through some of those initial steps, it could go through a hearing process, subject to reverse referendum and complete that in a couple of meetings to get authority. So, that's the first step. We'll talk a little bit about capacity and repayment here, but as you can see by having some of those other funding sources, grants, fundraising contributions and general fund dollars, the city's got a good target on how they're going to pay for this and we'll talk about that impact here shortly. It's been identified that the city would use general obligation bonds to help pay for this project. It's the lowest cost of financing for the city because it's backed by the full faith and credit pledge of the city. You can use multiple revenue sources to help repay it, but because you're giving that broad pledge, it's the highest credit quality and the lowest cost of financing. In Iowa, any city can have up to 5% of their actual valuation outstanding. So, the city's valuation for the current budget year fiscal '22, no we're doing our planning for '23 concurrently here now, is just shy of $500 million and the city's geo debt limit's just over $24 million. Of that, about 13 million's outstanding, 54% capacity, leaving about $11 million of legal capacity at this time. As we noted, maybe a million, million and a half that we're applying right now based on preliminary assumptions would be approximately 10% of that. So, plenty of capacity from the city's standpoint from the issuance process. That really leads us to, how do we pay for this? And the city's identified and would expect to use a combination of the debt service levy, which is part of the overall property tax rate of the city, and urban renewal TIF revenues. I've got those bolded on this page, it really is kind of the overall capital funding sources that could be applied for any project and then the two specific that we'd use here. Again, this is consistent how the city's paid for other capital needs such as the Central Business District Street Improvement Project as well as some historical projects, so this is really not out of the ordinary for a capital project of this kind that's not utility-focused. From a repayment standpoint, something that city staff has done is really work to structure the debt payments to minimize any property tax burden on the city. Historically, the city from a budget perspective has helped maintain the debt service levy component of the overall property tax rate so that there's no net impact on the overall rates. It's expected in our planning through various scenarios that the city would continue at this target, but being able to take into account that the Gates Hall levy will be going away and eventually the library levy will expire in a few years. So, that would help limit impact to taxpayers specifically for the Fieldhouse project without manipulating the overall property tax rate. Couple slides and I'll wrap up here. The TIF financing, I always try to make sure it's clear from this standpoint. It's a vehicle for cities to capture incremental taxes generated from growth of new valuation. The city of Nevada realizes some of the mature urban renewal areas. So, there's some revenue stream that's being generated now that the city's recognizing, realizing and applying to similar projects. We'd expect to continue that. I think the important thing to point out is that TIF does not raise property taxes. Anytime that's mentioned, I think it can be confused. So, wanted to be clear there that there's nothing new from this specifically, it's just that the project is located in an urban renewal area and we can use those dollars. The main goal here is really just using the urban renewal authority for this project because it is in that area. So, with that, the city can issue those geo bonds that can be repaid by the debt service levy. It would just be a public hearing process I mentioned, subject to reverse referendum, so completable within two meetings. And we'd probably want to save that process for once we have the actual bids received on the project. A few other considerations before I conclude with next steps and answer any questions on this portion. Want to be clear, and I mentioned before that the fundraising's pledged over a five-year period. So, you know, if you think about construction over a couple of years, some of the money already in the bank, expect that the city's going to need to cover maybe the last four years of donations during the construction period and those would be repaid over time as they're coming in. So, the city's kind of playing the bank there a little bit during the construction phase. You know, grant and other funding sources may be applied as sort of the last money in and those need to be cash flowed until that time as well. So, it's important to understand how it's staggered. We want to make sure we have the ability to pay those contractor invoices as they come in. Using general fund cash is helpful because that's money already in the bank, so we're not in a rush for any type of financing. We want to make sure that's aligned without putting anybody out from a timing standpoint. The last piece is that, you know, we mentioned the significant amount of funds that have been set aside, a general fund cash to pay for the Fieldhouse project. You know, that theoretically could go to other projects, other priorities of the council. Wanted to be clear, this was an outline of sources and uses that had been previously identified. Council can make that decision on how to shift those sources of funding, target the borrowing amount, repayment, etc. So, no set it and forget it, here we've got a plan overall that can be refined as you go through the bid steps, but wanted to be clear that we've worked with staff and have an overall plan at this time. To wrap up, again, those are preliminary sources and uses. We're going to want to make sure everything ties out when we do get bids and we can communicate with staff and council how that lines up for a final plan. I would separate then the related financing for the Fieldhouse project into two steps. The first step would be the authority process, the public hearing, two meetings to get that done. We know what the work will be, it's already defined in the city's urban renewal area. It's really about getting those bids in hand, understanding how much we want to borrow for on the project to establish a not-to-exceed amount. That's state law to behave the hearing process. And then the remaining financing timeline can be completed anytime, we just want to align that with funds are necessary to pay contractor invoices on the project. Depending on our timing, two to three additional council meetings to complete that process. You know, this is something we do regularly, the city's done before. It'd just be specific to this project and we want to make sure we have our ducks in a row. A good amount of information there to get things started, happy to answer any questions, but I'd probably defer to Jordan, Karen here first off before shifting over to the treatment plant project.
That's many, thank you.
So, let's shift gears here a little bit and talk about the wastewater treatment project and SRF financing review. I think just big picture here, the treatment plant project kind of has a broad title to some of the significant sewer improvement here and I know I've got a couple of the engineers on, so I'll fumble through the specific pieces, but really talking about big picture, not just the treatment plant itself, but the related lift station and trunk line improvements. So, big picture, this is a sizable project that you're likely aware of. The city's taken a number of steps in a couple of the phases here, but wanted to outline that for everyone's review as we jump in and make sure we're on the same page. So, I think the main thing to get across and many of you are aware, but we talked about cities' capital improvement projects falling into various buckets of have-to-do, need-to-do, want-to-do. The treatment plant is definitely a have-to-do type project, so it's a required project because the DNR needs the city to stay up and current with their treatment standards so they can maintain their permitting. I know the engineers can talk about that in more detail, but I just think it's important on the financing side and related rate-setting process that this is work that needs to be done. As you're aware, the city did bid the treatment plant portion of this project in late 2020, construction's been underway. That phase of work, the actual treatment plant itself, already had the financing authorized, so we had that authority I just mentioned on the Fieldhouse piece for $39.9 million last year. So, as we've gone through that, the city's actually issued two series of financing so far. A little over 1.3 million for the dirt work, Phase One work, and then a first series of $10 million on that treatment plant portion of 39.9. What we're discussing today and an action item on today's agenda is for a third series, another $10 million of the total. The reason for this timing now is that as of December, the city had less than $1 million remaining to draw on those prior loans. So, with that, we've got the legal documents set up, we've gone through the state process to secure this additional $10 million of funding. Wanted to talk through the additional planning and then the need for the city to adopt sewer rate adjustments that'll be sufficient to support the repayment of the next portion of debt, okay? I always like to highlight, and those of you that are on council and staff I know is tired of seeing the same information, but I think it's very important to outline what the basic financial health of any utility system would be. We really think about two main metrics, one is debt service coverage, similar to EBITDA for those of you in the commercial sector. And this is really the measure of long-term liquidity. We want to make sure that our revenues are sufficient, not just to cover operating expenses, but also debt payments with a little left over. Now, as part of any loan agreement and the financing for the sewer utility is the same, the state requires you to have a 10% operating cushion, so a dollar and 10 of net revenues for every dollar of debt. So, we need to make sure in any modeling that that is covered through any of the scenarios. The second place would be cash balance, it's kind of your rainy day reserves, really think about it as days' cash on hand. This is really your short-term liquidity, this is the money that you dip into for any short-term needs for operating or one-time capital. And a real minimum target here is 90 days' cash on hand, though I think depending on the size of the utility, it's been more and more common for folks to really target a baseline dollar amount, so call it a million dollars even. We really want to think about this on not just a snapshot in time today or June 30 fiscal year, but as a long-term basis to make sure that the city stays solvent with each of their utility funds. To create the scenarios that are necessary for our long-term planning and the required pro forma for the state, wanted to review the assumptions that we have here. So, the total project cost on the treatment plant portion is about $38.9 million. That includes the engineering and aligned energy electric install. And again, this is the actual work, the dirt work for 1.3 has been completed. The other portions are about $7 million for the lift station and $10.5 million for trunk line improvements. I appreciate that's a significant amount of dollars, we're looking at an overall financing for the sewer work at about $58 million. And again, we've authorized just shy of $40 million to date. Right now, our issuance would be up to about $21 million. So, if you just think about that overall, we're getting to about a third of the way through, 35, maybe 40% of the way through the required financing need for this project. It is a sizable project, but it's going to put the city in position where they're caught up on some of these major infrastructure needs. One thing we want to do is not just pay for these projects, but make sure we can continue to pay for necessary improvements throughout the system. Those are based on the city's CIP. And we also want to make sure that we've got conservative projections in there that make sure we can cover annual operating growth. So, a really robust scenario, we've been working to model this over a five or six-year period now and refining as data comes in. So, one of the important things here is to continue to monitor this before, during and after the project is completed. I will tell you that for a community your size, we are seeing projects of this scale. It's a new level of infrastructure investment. I know those are relatively large dollars for the public out there, but in terms of municipal infrastructure, this is, you know, tens of millions of dollars, hundred million dollars of improvements is not atypical these days. I want to just pause there, if anyone needs to chime in on any of this information before getting a little bit of the details on what we're looking at, projection rates and a summary here for next steps. Not hearing anything, I'll move on. I think something that's important to reiterate here is the project is being financed like a lot of these treatment plant projects through the IO Finance Authority's State Revolving Fund Program. Those loans are going to be repaid by sewer revenues from the system. They're going to cover all the project costs that are here. The state provides currently a 20-year term as their standard financing at an all-in rate of 2% and those can be prepaid at any time without penalty. Many communities are leveraging the State Revolving Fund because of the low-cost financing and the ease of use of the program, plus there's only paying interest on a drawdown basis. So, you're only paying interest on what you draw on each of these loans. That's part of the reason we've staggered out each of these portions, the first $10 million, now issuing the next $10 million, only paying interest as we go along. I would like to state that there is the option for a 30-year term at a 3% interest rate. I'll let the engineer speak to that, but on similar treatment plant projects that we financed, we have seen these be longer-term considerations and we expect the city would be eligible for that, at least on the treatment plant project. That being said, the city has targeted a 20-year financing to date. We can also apply funds from sewer construction reserves. We've got about $2 million that we think in the projection that could be money in that we don't need to finance. We're leaving that as sort of our rainy day cushion for now, could be the last money in to help reduce the size of the ultimate borrowing. I mentioned that this is long-term equipment, 30 to 50-year equipment, so that's something to consider in terms of the financing timeline. I would say that this is a large dollar amount and I'll summarize here the historical from the utility, but it's a different paradigm in terms of the revenues needed to support this infrastructure. Significant adjustments are going to be needed to support the project and we'll talk about that in further detail as we wrap up today's conversation. The important thing is not just to be in good shape to pay for this project, but into the future. And if we have a better-than-expected growth scenario or additional revenues, we can always retire the debt early without penalty. I want to be very clear on that point. We want to stay relatively conservative but reasonable throughout the planning and financing process until the project is fully completed and online. So, where are we on the financing steps? I'm showing phases one and two here, phase one being the dirt work, phase two being the plant, with an understanding that phase three and four, phases three and four are related to the lift station and trunk line improvements. So, those are in addition to what's here. I mentioned completing the financing for the 1.3 million of dirt work and the first $10 million of Phase Two. We're really calling this the Part B of Phase Two at this point and we expect that this will close at the end of January and provide enough funding for the city on this project into June of 2022. The balance we think could be issued in late spring, early summer of '22 to make sure we continue to have dollars available to pay for the bids, the contractor bids that have already been let on the treatment plant project. And we expect the city will have a portion, another portion will be related to Burke's overall share of the treatment plant project and lift station. Those terms are still being negotiated overall. Just a little snapshot of the five-year historical for the city's sewer fund, I know there's a lot of numbers on the screen. I think the important thing I want to point out is historically, the operating revenues for the city's sewer fund have been about $1.3 to $1.6 million. Just for some context for you, when all the debt is online for the system based on a 20-year structure, the annual debt payments over the 20-year term are going to be just a shade over $3 million. So, really need to have significantly more revenues to help pay for these infrastructure improvements. So, this paradigm over the last five or eight years is going to look dramatically different over the next five years. I think that's something that's important to communicate to staff and council at this time. Something I think is important as we talk about revenues and then rate adjustments is not dissimilar from any other communities. It's not that the city's rates are necessarily going to be high, it's that they've been artificially low for some time. And specifically, I'd point out as in 2019, the fixed monthly charges for the city were about $10.13 per month. That was the minimum charge and the construction charge. Those are the only fixed rates and comprised about 37% of the bill. Now, Nevada I appreciate is under 10,000 population, but the city of Ames puts out a nice water and sewer report on an annual basis for cities over 10,000 population that provide their data. And out of those 42 communities, you know, that base rate was lower than all but 16. Ames puts out new reports every year, I have some summary on the next page of last year's report. We expect the '21 report will be out in the next couple of weeks. As you can imagine, other communities are also investing in their infrastructure. So, those medians, averages and high levels all change as everyone continues to invest. The city has taken steps to increase the sewer rates and charges in anticipation for this project. I think something that's important to note that from 2012 through 2019, the city had only increased the sewer bill about $2.77 total on a monthly average bill. The last two increases in July '20 and '21 increased that $5.50 and $6.60 respectively. For the current financing, the city's going to be required to have another increase of about $10, $10.40 per month on a residential bill. And we'll show where that comparison looks like and what that means for future rate ordinance on the following slides. You know, I think the important thing to point out is again, this gets us to the first $21 million of borrowing on what will be, you know, 45-plus million dollars of total work. So, additional increases will be needed and wanted to make sure that's understood here, that this is a step as we continue to build and will continue to work with staff to identify those necessary rate increases at future dates. Let me just finish the summary on the rate piece and I'll look for some feedback for you before closing up. Just some context of where this would place, again, this is the 2020 report, we expect to have the 2021 report shortly. The red table, the red bars would be the high, the highest reported for both, for each of zero, 600 and 1,000 cubic feet of monthly charges on the sewer side, that's statewide, again, communities over 10,000 population from the Ames report, it's the best information we have available. Those median rates in gray were Nevada had been in 2019 in purple and then in the marigold there on the far right for each is the projected rate after this next ordinance to help pay for the current debt obligation. Again, we expect each year, the red and the gray, the high and the median from the statewide continue to increase and we know that the city will need to make continued investments in the system to finish up this project as well. In terms of actual numbers here on slide 11 and then I'll pause, here's the potential sewer rate adjustments that we're talking about in terms of the monthly minimum charge, sewer construction charge, the use charge, and then what that would be for residential and small commercial users based on 4,000 gallons and 10,000 gallons. Again, going from about $39.64 per month to $50.04 per month based on 4,000 gallons of usage. Again, this is to cover this next phase of financing, continued increases will be necessary over the next couple of years as the rest of the financing and project work comes online. I'm going to pause there before concluding with my summary on the last two slides. Just kick it over to Jordan or Karen or any other questions or comments that might be useful at this time. So... So I think I would just add here, if I was sitting there today, I would say, well, Mike. Where do you see this going? And I think it depends on a couple of decisions that'll be made. I think it depends on finalizing the the Burke agreement. Um, and then the timing, obviously of the remaining projects. But I would tell you that our projections would be depending on certain timing decision, tho- those et cetera pieces. That uh, average monthly bill uh, that we're projecting at fifty dollars and four cents here to pay for this portion. When all the debt is online. We think that monthly would be on the sewer side between about seventy five dollars to ninety dollars. And again, there's other factors that go into that. The city is experiencing some growth. Um, there's other considerations there in terms of those projections. But I want to at least frame up that this is still a midpoint step for the city. Uh, don't want to be hiding the ball here from that standpoint, but there as a sizable project, timing matters. Some of these other factors matter. We'll continue to work with staff and refine those as we go along. So a few other considerations here. Um, one of the reasons we've staggered the financing out is again, the the multi-year construction process. But also that the the agreement uh, to be made with Burke has tax status implications for financing. Really need that to be finalized uh, to be able to complete that work with the state program for their share. So we've got runway from this financing through June of this year. And as this gets completed, we'll complete the other portions. I think the big picture is there's been an agreed to conversation of about twenty three percent of the treatment plant and lift station improvements are related to their share. And it's a matter of how those are going to be covered uh, upfront over time or a combination. I think it's, it needs to be clear that those are going to be reimbursed for those infrastructure improvements. The city is going to need access to that capital before finalization. That's something that we're working through in the planning. Uh, the second piece here, and again, this has been discussed with council or with the staff, but bringing the council's attention. Um, and get any feedback, current city plan and recommendation is for a twenty year financing term. On all the SRF debt issuance, I appreciate the the focus on getting this paid. Um, more more rapidly. Uh, again, there's no break for anything shorter than twenty years. So it makes sense to at least be at twenty years. As we know, we'll continue to need to invest in city infrastructure. However, I wanted to be clear, as I mentioned before. Uh, we think certain portions of this may be eligible for thirty year financing. We have seen other communities choose to do that. Wanted to make sure that was at the council's attention. Uh, it would help spread out the impact of some of the financing. Um, and we can work on that. I think that would help us get her to the lower end of the range if that's something that the city wanted to do. Uh, the last piece, and I'm not trying to make any confusion here, but we are expecting the city to apply some general fund cash reserves for other city projects like the field house. Those could be theoretically applied towards the treatment plant. But for now, the way we have everything modeled is that the sewer utility is paying with sewer revenues for the sewer project. Uh, those are council decisions, but I want to at least frame this for other considerations. It's been a while since we talked with council and know there's some new faces as well. Last page in terms of current action plan for any uh, remaining comments or questions. You know, we we did work with Karen to complete the application uh, for the December deadline with the state. Uh, got the required pro forma done for that piece. The city already has authority for the thirty nine point nine million. And the state board did approve the city's loan request at the early January meeting. So uh, tonight's action during your regular agenda will be to authorize those loan documents that the city's bond council, Dorsey and Whitney did prepare. Uh, that's going to get us funding through through June and the first draw request will be made at the end of January. We will need those rate adjustments uh, as I outlined here today to be made on this portion. Here at the subsequent meeting, so you can get that ordinance process started. Um, as the city team continues to work with Burke and getting that agreement done. Davidson's going to continue to support the rate sufficiency scenarios, work with Dorsey and Whitney. And I expect to be back to you folks, uh, if not uh, early than late second quarter with the next round of financing and projections to share at that time. So overall, that's a summary. I know a lot to digest uh, from that standpoint. Um, again, happy to answer any questions here either in the moment from staff or council or more than happy to follow up with folks offline. Uh, through staff again at that point. Uh, thank you again for the opportunity to share and um, you know, Jordan and Karen, I can defer to you to to start us off then in Q and A or or follow up items you see as pertinent at this time.
Mike, counsel. Jordan, Karen, anything?
There's a lot to take in.
What would be difference if we, because a three million dollars a year of operating cost? Forget what it was. One and a half now, it would go up to three million. We need to go up to three million, but what would the difference be if we were to do it for thirty year?
Uh, yeah. Mike, I think you ran those numbers, didn't you?
Yeah, yeah. So I just, um, I wanted to kind of summarize up here um, on that other consideration slide. For a thirty year option, and again, you've got some of the debt at twenty years, some at thirty. So depending how how the state lets us shake it out and depending on how uh, creative we can get with some of that structuring. I would conservatively say that could maybe save five to ten dollars per month on that average bill. By going to a thirty year option. Um, I would tell you that it could be higher than that, but I would not want to promise outside that range just based on uh, preliminary details. Um, timing matters too. But yeah, if you wanted to anchor around five to ten dollars per month, uh, impact on the thirty year, that's one thing. It would obviously include the overall interest cost on the financing. Um, not only are you financing for longer, but to extend that, the state does require a higher interest rate on that portion. We are discussing and have continued to have discussions with the state about leveraging some of the federal funds coming in. Not for free uh, grant money, but to potentially get a rate reduction on those items. I don't know that we necessarily have a path to that at this point, but um, want to be clear, we're trying to leverage those discussions to the extent possible for the city. Three to four hundred thousand dollars a year is the short answer. How's that?
Do you want to see that more spelled out or?
Understand what he said.
Anything else from council? Okay, then if there's nothing else, we can close that review and move into the consent agenda. If any item can be removed for separate consideration.
Move to approve.
Second, Barb and Dane, any discussion on consent agenda? Seeing none, council please vote. And that's approved, takes us to appointments. Um, we have a vacancy on uh, Historic Preservation Commission and expense has applied for that uh, for that resignation. Place Walmart tonight, which is why he's not here.
So I'm going to be, I am highly contented that he is not here. He's in Hawaii, sitting on a beach.
Probably watching the sunset as we speak, probably. So motion by Jason, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Dane, any other discussion? Seeing none, council please vote. That's approved, takes us into the public forum. Time set aside for comments from the public on topics of city business other than those listed on the agenda. No action may be taken. Is there anyone here to speak in the public forum this evening? Seeing none, we'll close the public forum into old business. Old business A approved pay request number eighteen for central business district infrastructure project from construct incorporated. In in the amount of two hundred and seventy one thousand eight hundred and forty five dollars and seventy three cents.
Second.
Jason, Sandy, discussion? Hey, council please vote. Takes us to B, prepare request number seven for wastewater treatment facility project phase two, amount of four hundred and twenty six thousand eight hundred and fifty five dollars and sixty six cents. Move to approve.
Okay.
Brian and Barb. Hey, seeing no discussion again, so council please vote. And that is approved, takes us to resolution number thirty eight, twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, a resolution authorizing continued support for the Main Street Iowa program. An approved agreement with Main Street Nevada and Iowa Economic Development Authority.
I move to second.
Dane and Sandy. Discussion. Okay, seeing none, council please vote. That's approved, takes us to item D, resolution number thirty nine, twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. Resolution certifying the population of the annexation area associated with resolution number seventeen, twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. For Bionium Pacific Railroad to the state of Iowa. Second, Jason and Brian, any discussion?
All right.
Seeing none, council please vote. Takes us to E, resolution number forty, twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, a resolution authorizing and approving a loan and disbursement agreement and providing for the issuance and securing. At the payment of ten million taxable sewer revenue bond series twenty twenty two. Second, Barb and Brian, discussion on that? Seeing none, council please vote. That's approved, takes us into business A, approve local option tax, capital, equipment revolving hotel motel, TIF worksheets for the FY twenty two, twenty three budget.
Second.
Jason, Sandy. Any discussion? Seeing none, council please vote. Takes us to B, resolution number forty one, twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. Resolution authorizing the city of Nevada, Iowa participation and membership in the area wide plans and programs of the Mid Iowa Planning Alliance for Community Development.
Move to approve.
Second.
Brian and Steve. Any discussion on that? I guess for Jordan or Karen, is that similar to a cog that they're forming?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what it looked like. It'd be good to have a local one. Any other discussion?
We're the only place in the state that does not have a cog, so. Not for lack of trying, so we hope it works.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, council please vote. That is approved, um, takes us into C, resolution number forty two, twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. A resolution approving the provider of the story county Iowa for publication of our Nevada.
Move to approve. Second.
Dane and Steve. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, council please vote. Takes us into D, approved supportive vision twenty forty plan and originally I was planning to go through the whole presentation, however, we have a long night tonight. Um, I don't want to overgo this because it has been an important process and a very important document for the city moving forward and for the community moving forward. So if there are things in there we need to talk about, happy, happy to do so. You've heard us update you. Throughout the last, gosh, year and a half, we've probably, we've gone through this process to get here, but there was a tremendous amount of public feedback. Um, I think the group did a really nice job waiting through that and kind of honing it into one document. So far, I know several of the groups have endorsed it, including this, the school district has. I don't know for sure. Everybody's working on getting it through their next board meeting. So I don't know for sure all the boxes that have been checked, but I know for sure the school district was. But again, happy to to talk through that some more. Um, but you have the the document in your packet.
Move to approve. Second.
Sandy and Barb, any discussion? Seeing none, council please vote. That is approved, um, takes us into E, approved purchase of trench shield box for the water department.
Sean was going to be here, but something came up, um, so I wasn't able to make it. But basically, this is exactly what it says, a trench shield box. It's supposed to shield our workers from any type of uh, cave ins from um, a trench that is dug for water breaks or any any holes that are are done for infrastructure.
Move to approve.
Second, Jason, Brian, discussion?
Yeah, those are important to have. Should never be in the ground without one.
Yeah. I can't believe we don't have.
Thanks.
Council please vote.
You don't have any lights?
Looks like they all lit up.
Got it.
Okay, so that's approved, takes us to resolution number forty three, twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. A resolution providing for notice of hearing on proposed amendment, the revitalization plan for Nevada urban renewal, urban revitalization area.
Move to approve. Second.
Brian and Dane, discussion? Seeing none, council please vote. That is approved, takes us into resolution number forty four, twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. Resolution declaring economic development support for the catalyst grant to development project at one 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 four Sixth Street.
Move to approve.
Second. Okay, so Jason and Sandy. Any discussion? Seeing none, council please vote. That is approved, takes us to resolution number forty five, twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. Resolution declaring economic development support for the downtown housing grant to development project at eleven fourteen Sixth Street.
Move to approve.
Second.
Dane, Barb. Any discussion? Seeing none, council please vote. That is approved, takes us to I, resolution number forty six, twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. Resolution to set public hearing on proposed vacation and disposal of real property outlaw, Outlot A Academy Estates.
And just, it's actually Lot A and Outlot A.
Okay.
It's, the resolution is correct.
Okay. So Lot A and Outlot A.
Move to approve.
Second.
Sandy and Steve, discussion? And seeing none, council please vote. That is approved, um, takes us into reports starting with city administrator.
All right, some meetings I attended over the, I guess it feels like it's been forever since we've been in here, but um, we've had a couple of community mental health meetings pertaining to uh, February mental health month, which is exciting. I'll let Barb and Brett talk and Mary talk more about that. Uh, we've had LHD meetings, Lincoln Highway Days, getting prepared for that for next year. Very exciting pizza pie loser, which is um, a new event that we're creating for May fourteenth. Tenderness information meeting pertaining to the Greenway Carbon Pipeline that is being talked about, that along with Summit. NEDC meeting, we had a safety training meeting pertaining to personal protective equipment. That our fire department, Ray conducted, did a great job. And then we have Leadership Academy, which starts Thursday. Very exciting, and then just a reminder that I will be on the twelfth through the twenty-third.
Counsel, anything for Jordan?
Okay, so from my report, Jordan mentioned February, that thanks to Barb bringing up the discussion on mental health in the community, particularly lingering effects of COVID. And so we had a good committee get brought together and became larger than I think originally was thought. So the, kind of the goal is to transition from Phil to Floyd with the, the physical needs of the community to a general wellness month in February. So Mr. Corbin back there coined another term with February, so he gets credit for that. So it basically broke into four themes each week while the theme, so the first week is mood, then fun, create and tools. So, you know, the first week we brought together all of the folks in the community, from the gyms to the dance studios to jujitsu, parks in Iraq, run a gym in Nevada, anyone we could think of that, that has an organization around movement, to think about things to, to put on the calendar that week. And so same thing with, with the other themes, and then the last one will be tools around like mental health, first aid and other support systems that are within the community. So it should, should be good, hopefully will highlight a lot of the great things that are already happening. I think more, more than anything, hopefully as an awareness thing and get, get folks excited about different things. And picked February because it's the coldest, darkest, heartiest month of the year. Everyone can use a little bit of a boost in the month of February, so. I don't know if Barb has anything you want to add? But yeah, watch for more information as we get closer on that. Otherwise, continuing to work with the foundation on the final stages of the field house campaign, and that's getting right to our goal. So we're excited about that, a few more pledges and where we need to be to have that in front of you soon. And then also now that Vision Twenty-Forty is approved, and we have Steve joining us, it's probably time to start talking about doing a full strategic planning session. So I'll probably pick Sandy's brain and work with Jordan and Karen on getting something moving on, on that. So anything for me? Okay, council reports.
Jordan mentioned we had Lincoln Highway Day committee meeting this week, so getting that going soon. I would like to already got them all rolling, you know. Last year just seemed a little disjointed just because of the big break, the year break, so things just didn't quite jive as well. So, but this year I feel like we're getting it going a lot better, so looking forward to that.
Any other reports?
I would just mention Healthy Hometown is back on the agenda too, sort of another one of those that got lost in the shuffle of the last year with meetings. But that's the program that we're doing with Walmart and healthy improvements in lots of ways in the community, so we're meeting later this month.
Anything else? And we'll start with staff, go to Fire and Ray.
Good evening, just a couple of things ahead in the, my report. Ryan and I worked with Mozmart today, we inspected both facilities. They were going to be on the council agenda tonight, but they are not prepared for council approval. So there's some health and safety things that we're working on with coolers that have rust in them and stuff like that. So some of the nuisance things, the sign out there, the broken window and all that stuff. So they've assured us that they're in the process of removing all the old product and that they'll be ready for the twenty-fourth for the alcohol and tobacco permit license. So we're going to bring it forward until they're in full compliance. One oh two K, we do have a plan in place, once the city owns that building, I'll let our city attorney talk a little bit about that process. But once the city owns that building, we've been working with the DNR to have an asbestos inspection done, and then we'll go through the state's approved demolition process. And I've talked to our public works and city administrator on trying to take care of that property. And then lastly, we were, we received a grant from the State Farm Marshal's Office for six thousand dollars for wildland and rescue suits. Those nine suits came in and then we're in the process of seeking that reimbursement for the city. So that's all I have.
Thanks, Ray. Dane is on.
I don't really have any other updates, I'll keep it short this week because we have that work session right after this, so. Any other questions or anything like that?
I'm surprised you're not wearing Alabama today.
We've got to get going, like the game started. All right, thanks, guys.
And we'll park and rec, do you have something, Honda?
Unless anybody has any questions from Kim to report.
Hey, and then I don't know if either Henry or Brenda would like to report from Main Street or NEDC, but you're welcome to provide an update.
No reports tonight, please.
Okay. Trying to make sure I'm not missing anybody, looks like police is next.
As far as training, we have two in FTO, so they're in week three of.
Well, it's on his cannons is picking it up, is he?
Two in FTO, they're in week three, it's a twelve-week process, so they'll be working every shift, getting some experience and then be on their own. We have one position to fill, which we have testing the first week of February, we're hoping to possibly send somebody to the April Academy. If we hire, then we'll be fully staffed. Other than that, I can answer any questions?
Thank you. Karen?
Just working on the budget. Going to have a workshop next meeting after the regular council meeting, so plan on that. Submitted the final paperwork, I received the county agreement we did for redistricting back today, so I submitted that. And hopefully we have everything submitted for our redistricting.
Anything for Karen? And engineering?
Larry sent in who mostly project updating that model last week for you guys, but other than that, nothing.
Karen?
Just an update on one oh two K, we, the time periods have all expired now for that redemption period. So we have sent in the, the original tax sale certificate that the city had purchased from the tax sale certificate holder. That then gets filtered with all of our publication notices, gets filtered back through the editor and the recorder, and they'll send us the deed. So we're just waiting on getting the deed back, and then we, at that point, the city can move forward, Ray, with your intended purposes for that property. We will do on the back end a hundred and twenty day notice, but it's, that's just kind of to make sure we wipe clear any potential creditors on that. But the city can move forward, so as soon as you have that deed in hand, you guys can go ahead. Nothing else for me?
Counsel, anything else before we adjourn the meeting portion? I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
Dane, Brian, all those in favor, please say aye.
And Karen, logistically for the workshop, is there a separate Zoom link published for that or is it the same? Okay, so we'll just leave, leave the Zoom going. And I'm assuming most of you are here for the workshop, so thank you for your patience in getting us here to that point. It came out of the, the previous meeting about some potential ordinance changes, and so we wanted to have that discussion. So during the run, most of it, I know that he and Aaron took some feedback, it was for the last time, and already made some adjustments, so we can talk about some of those things. And then we do want to collect feedback the other way, but since it's online, we'll ask that anyone from the public who has something to contribute goes to the microphone so they can be heard for those that are going to be online. So that'll be kind of the general overview for the workshop, any questions before we get going? Okay, then we'll hand it over to staff.
You kind of want to start this off and? Okay, cool. All right, so thank you all for attending the, the meeting tonight, the workshop over the rental agreement. A lot of your concerns last week, that is kind of, or a month ago, we're kind of wanting to address some of those. The fees was the big thing that I, I heard, that everyone was kind of curious about, and we didn't really discuss those at all. Ryan and I, as well as our attorney, did discuss the fees of what we were planning on doing that. And if, Aaron, if you wanted to break down the costs on that, basically it's going to be twenty-five per property. And if it's a rental unit, such as an apartment complex, it would be twenty-five per building and then five dollars per door. So if you have five apartments in there, it would be twenty-five plus the twenty-five dollars, so it would be a fifty dollar total.
Yep.
So the fees were one of the things that we discussed, so we didn't really want the fees to be, you know, extremely high, we wanted them to be reasonable, because, you know, it does trickle down like you guys were talking about.
The fees are really, they're probably just there to cover staff time, it's not intended to be anything more than that, so.
Yeah, so yeah, so that covers staff, the other thing that was brought up was the crime. We kind of discussed that, and I think we're going to basically do away with the whole crime prevention side of things. That's really, I mean, it, it does help you guys a little bit, but at the same time, that's why you guys have all of your stuff in place, your, all of your requirements that you guys have. So that's kind of why we did, went away from that. Some of the things that we wanted to discuss a little bit further were the, the complaints thing, we're planning on taking that out. Just because it, I mean, it is your house, I mean, obviously there, I mean, that didn't really make sense, so.
So everybody knows, I don't know if you have copies in front of you, but that was the proposed, is it one fifty-eight eleven?
One fifty-eight eleven.
Yes, right, we have two different versions. Yeah, I, I mean, just, the city doesn't want to be in the landowner business. That was, that was really there to be a helping mechanism, but we were hearing that that was not favorable from the landlord side. So we've, we're going to plan to remove that section.
Yeah, and then the other, you know, the other thing that we, you guys kind of brought up was the, you know, say if your land, your tenant walks off and owes the city money for water bills. And you guys are stuck paying for that. So how are we going to figure out how to get that done, because the city still needs to make that revenue up that's lost? And landlord should not necessarily be responsible for that money. So what we're trying to figure out on doing that is requiring landlords to keep track and turning social security numbers for tenants. And the reason that we would ask for that, I'm assuming you guys all already asked for social securities, because you guys are running background and credit checks and everything along those lines. So the reason that we are asking for that is because that allows us to track them down and we, and get that money. It allows us to garnish their wages and allows us to go after them during taxes.
Can we legally do that?
We've got some concerns with that, yeah, we, we all came into this as a thing. I'd, from a practical perspective, one of the things that Jordan and I had talked about when that question was raised was, is that the city's role to go after utility bills from the landlords? And I, I don't know, we've got some additional conversations to have on that, but.
Aaron, I have a question about that.
Yeah.
So if I rent from Andy, and I have to come in here and set up my water account, right? Then we ask for the social security numbers. Why do we, why does the landlord have to do it?
Do, they have it.
So then, so why do they have to keep track of it? That's my question, is if we already have it.
But then, can we legally do that?
If you say, hey, Andy, I already got Aaron's social security number, but give it to me again.
I've got a lot easier solution to this. You already have dog licenses, I mean, that, that last ordinance was pretty ugly, honestly, stop it. It looked like some thinly disguised justification that we had kind of idea there were certain people we didn't want to tell. Everybody that wants to rent Nevada come in, fill out an application at City Hall, when you guys come discriminating, you got their social security numbers, I mean.
We're not discriminating, Andy.
We've, we've got, I, I know you're saying you're taking it out, but that one that we, we had come across before us, we already do background checks. And you get a constant complaint when you say won't rent to somebody, let's, let's discriminate, you're discriminating us, basically. Now on top of it, you know, the, the last one around. So we take class, we do an approved background check, and if we have enough complaints, I mean, it's, we can do a one-stop shop, just everybody apply at City Hall. Get a rental certificate, and you're free to rent from us. The city can handle the, the complaints. I prefer, you know, comfortable pairing in tenant information to the city, if the city wants it, there's ways to do it, but.
Well, that's what I'm, that's kind of what I'm getting at, if, if we already have their information.
Why do we have to burden a landlord to give us the same information?
And I, I, and I don't know, I don't know what we collect, I'm just thinking out loud, you know?
We spoke of water bills before, I don't remember hearing anything about that a month ago, that anybody was complaining about landlords being on the hook for water, I know it's been a discussion.
Well, you know how many times we've done it in the past?
And, and the landlord's always paying, I get why, because they have accessible property, I mean, that's the one thing you can go after easily. I just, I was kind of surprised that that was a complaint, because I didn't hear anybody complain about that.
Yeah, there was one, one person that brought it up, but that's why we addressed it, it's.
And that's my only question, is if, don't we collect that information? I, I mean, I don't know what we collect.
Collect their social securities, but there are, yeah, there are some times that we do not collect their social securities. We need to have our people that are supposed to do that done legally.
I think, well, for the utility purposes, they already have it. I think it depends on how the landlord does it, operates it too. If each unit is signed up separately, which is, it sounds like what's happening mostly here, but we've got some communities where the landlord is the only name on those utility bills and then disperses the prorata to their tenant, so.
I think there's some of that, because I know with the newsletter, we've had that comment for years, that there are certain tenants that don't get it, because they don't get the water bill to them.
Sure.
I was going to say, is it Homakers on just one big water bill? No, Homakers is on all on one.
They don't have any individual meters on any of it.
Not on Homakers. That's why I haven't been fixing them.
I was just thinking out loud, if already did it, I don't know what we do.
I don't know that, I don't know that we need to add it. This wasn't even about utilities, that section I was quoting, where are we at?
I mean, have the federal government call me to do background checks on people, kid, usually high school kids that used to work for me and they're in the military now. I will give them their social security number, because I don't know if it's Andy or Kathy or. Texas law, I'm just saying, hey, I work for the Department of Defense, you know?
Not the renters.
I'll give them the last four, because I think we can all do that.
So I'm in what section are you looking at?
One fifty-eight. It's one fifty-eight, eight dash two, A three B.
Yeah, and that's for the, I was just talking to Jordan, that's for the owners, not the renters, so.
Yeah, one fifty-eight oh seven dash.
Time issue, it doesn't apply.
One.
Is it currently in here? It's not currently in here.
No, it's not in here.
And I do have one question about the complaints, because I know some of the things that instigated this years ago, was we get calls up here, like the sewer's backing up all over the bathroom and there's sewage everywhere, and the landlord hasn't fixed it in two weeks.
Yeah, so that was the reason the complaints were in there. So if you have a tenant that has something broken and the landlord won't break, won't fix it, that was the, that was the.
Further on, there's a point system that, you know, police complaints, it goes to your landlord license or certificate, whatever it is, you know, that, some of that's a little out of our control. That, that was what I was talking about, if we're, if we're not wanting some people renting, we can streamline that a lot, but there's, that, a month ago, that packet was, we take the class, we do an approved background check, and we're in danger of losing our license then. and we're in danger of losing our license then if, if we get so many police complaints out in a certain amount of time. There were points that checked off against our certificates. I mean, there was, there was a lot of stuff there. I'm not talking about the.
Yeah, we took that out, so there's, again, th- there's no point in discussing it anymore because we're, we're not doing the crime prevention thing because you're right.
You had said we were taking the crime prevention thing out, but I didn't know anything about the complaints. We don't have anything in front of us, so. You said we were taking the crime thing out, but I was addressing the, the complaint thing going against.
Yeah, one fifty-eight eleven is also, is the complaint that we're taking out as well.
Well, and that, that's what I wanted to, to question because I think for me, a lot of it comes down to, you know, it, it's really difficult when you get those calls like, like the sewer backup one in particular and not, I, I think there needs to be a mechanism in that case. I mean, I, I'm actually more worried about those really egregious cases than I am the everyday. Like, to me, I think that's more important than, than inspections on the front end because I think most of these folks are probably doing a really good job. Um, but, you know, we had cases where we couldn't do anything because we had nothing in the code about those minimum standards and what happens if they're violated.
That's part of the, the landlord tenant law, isn't it? That they, they make a complaint, the landlord has two weeks to take care of it and the tenant doesn't have to pay it. They can get out of lease.
Yeah, and that was the discussion that Jordan and I had about that section was that tenants have those rights already under Iowa law. Um, and presumably under your contracts, um, to walk away from those if, if the landlord is not going to remedy the situation, so.
Yeah.
Right? Um, so for the city to step in and be, um, you, you won't like the word, but that big brother, I don't, we didn't think that was necessary, so.
So would the tenants in that case be guided to what their recourse is?
Yeah, with the, the state law, they'd fall back on the state law then.
Right, so there's ways for it to be resolved other ways. I'm totally fine with that, but there were those cases before where it was almost like, yep, nothing can be done and.
Yeah, our back, our back was pinned against the wall. We just, we, all we could do was listen. We had no, we had, we had no way to even pick up the phone and find out what was really going on from the rent, from the landlord's perspective.
Yeah, so if they're told here's at the state where you can call and get it taken care of, I think that's fine, but I think we need to be.
Yeah, so if that's.
Meaning that over.
But Andy, are you talking about the one fifty-eight nineteen? Wait, it's, it was the crime stuff?
The crime release.
Chronic law enforcement issues? Is that what you were referring to?
Yeah, you said you took the, the criminal stuff out.
That's in nineteen. That's in one fifty-eight point one nine.
Yeah.
It's not in eleven.
Nineteen was struck.
Yeah.
All of nineteen around.
Yeah, I, I, so nineteen was the, all the crime prevention stuff, we're taking that out, so that's not even a part of it. And then we jumped up to the one fifty-eight eleven, which was the complaints.
Okay.
And we're, we're taking that out.
Okay, you got that one.
The state law protects the tenants and landlords for that. And then, yeah, so one fifty-eight nineteen, one fifty-eight twenty-one, or twenty, twenty-one.
Those cities are out?
Yeah, those, those are out.
But then the last part of this at this point is twenty, um, ahead of nineteen. So this, now that, now the chapter ends with a, with one fifty-eight eighteen variances?
Yes, except there'll be some renumbering. Well, yeah, I'm sure, but, but that's where.
Yeah, and now, I think now that Jordan's had a chance to outline the proposed changes, maybe we'll have any concerns from the public. We'll have you go to the microphone again so we can make sure we capture them on the, on the recording. Um, but we definitely want to hear more thoughts or feedback on where it currently is standing right now.
Can we get a copy of the revised, all the revisions at some point before any final decisions are made?
It, it would be part of any packet going forward, but yeah, absolutely. Um, we wanted to. Yeah.
And is it easiest way for them to get older, you can learn to get that, if they want a copy, we just email it to them?
Well, I think you want one after the revisions, right?
Yeah, I think.
After tonight.
We all do. Yeah, I think I'm the only one who currently has it.
I think you gotta hold the city hall though, email you one after your, give me your email. Andy wants a copy.
Hey, Andy.
So pardon there about making every, have a building accessible for inspection. Is that, that's going to stand? I mean, I, I understand you get into a house, you want to be able to get into every room. Uh, Coakler's, I got four apartments above I manage. Are we going to go through every room in Coakler's building?
Same Ryan nodding yes.
Yeah.
All right. I mean, downstairs, the accounting offices, everything. Okay.
Well, downstairs, the accounting area is separate, it's separate.
It's only, it's, it's only residential rental properties or it, it wouldn't be commercial properties. So his accounting stuff, no, but the apartments above, yes, because people are living there.
Well, it says every part of the building, right? And then it goes into.
Living quarters or resident, if you're, if it's rent, rental, it's building, I think is what it says.
It doesn't, it asks, it tells them to go in the basement and the commercial part, everything.
It's, it, it, we're having access to the entire, every room of the building.
Okay.
Aaron's making notes, so he'll review the language to make sure it's clear.
Yeah, because it, it should only be, it should only be if it's a rental, rented space such as for re- uh, for residential uses. Not like commercial, like, like, uh, your laundry mat. That wouldn't be inspected.
No, I, I understand that.
I mean.
It makes you a space of just the residential space.
Yeah. That's. That, that's what I'm asking. Yeah, it reads currently, it's every room, right, the entire building.
Right.
If, if we're talking about just the rental space of that, it streamlines things a ton.
Right, so this is pulled from a different kind of area where not a lot of businesses have residential above that.
Right.
We're in a different ballpark and that'll be adjusted for, but all the common space areas that your tenants are allowed to go would be inspected.
Okay, that's, that's a ton easier.
But I've got it written down.
Like, a lot of the places downtown have laundry basement, that's a common space area. That would be inspected as well.
Perfect, thank you.
Can you, uh, can you tell me, uh, like what part, you kind of read that, that way I, do you remember if it was more closer to, uh, after the definitions or like before?
Yeah. Jordan, I think it's one fifty-eight oh nine, the intro there, where it talks about the building and zoning official, so inspect each rental unit or portion thereof. Is that the?
Oh, yeah, is that what you're?
Oh, it's just been a month.
Yeah.
Okay, don't worry about that. And then Brian, if you have future clarification, why don't you get closer to one of the mics so that online people can hear you? Okay. Other comments, feedback?
I think we need to look at sixty-nine eleven. Is that the parking?
That's the truck, trailer, boat parking section. And the only reason is because,
I, I, and I'll just speak for myself. Virtually every vehicle I own, if I drive something home, I'm violating that law because it says it's over one ton. I can't park next to my house. Or if I, you know, technically when I, or my son pulls the truck and trailer with the skid loader in there, I know it's not going to sit there for a long time, but, I mean, we're technically breaking that law. Sixty-nine eleven says one ton.
Right, so this is a section that there were no proposed changes to, but you're asking for.
I think, I mean, I've read through it a few times and, and that's one of them that I think, let me go back here, I can speak more. I just made a note about sixty-nine eleven.
I, I, I just think it's out of date is the only thing I think.
I was going to say, when I was reading this, probably to prevent.
It says, I get semi-trailers, trucks, um, but truck and trailer, I mean, yeah, it is a one-ton manufacturer rating. Well, that's, that doesn't take much anymore on just about half the people that drive anything over half-ton pickup. I don't think about temporary. It just says, it's licensed as such, it cannot be parked adjacent to anything classified as a, as residential. As you can't, you're on six streeting from I to N, so that means, yeah, if I park in front of snack time, I'm breaking the law because my truck's over one ton. Break the law a lot. All we need to do is up the tonnage or something, is the only thing I'm thinking. I get, I want to start.
Time period on, like forty-eight hours or something.
Nah, why can't I park my truck all weekend in front of my own house, you know? What if I go on vacation? I'm just saying, I think it's just a tonnage thing. I mean, I get the semi-trailer, I get the, um, twenty thousand, you know, it talks about gross tons, twenty thousand, I mean, that's, it's just a whole one-ton manufacturer's rating. I think we just changed that line. I think everyone's good. Yeah, we've done it. Not that our guys are gonna, I, I'm guessing the R T D isn't driving around, you know, parking tires on every pickup that's parked in front of every house because they got better things to do, but is that right, Chris? That's what I figured, but, I mean, just, because it said you can park something bigger than that for deliveries, collecting goods, or anything that's necessary for delivery collection, blah, 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 blah. I just say it's the one-ton part. Just out of date, I think. I mean, while they're going through it, we just didn't change it. Sixty-nine eleven.
Did I tell you that already? Good. Yep, and since Brian brought up parking, there's one parking issue that comes up a lot, especially since we have very successful event space downtown and that's, um, the ability to designate certain sec, certain spots as short-term, so they turn over. Um, because now that we, if there's an all-day conference at gatherings, for example, a lot of times downtown parking can be full for eight hours. So a lot of the business owners have complained about that quite heavily.
There's, there's maybe something.
I don't, I don't think we allow for it, so I was just saying we might need to add in parking that we can designate short-term parking spaces downtown limited into whatever time period.
Maybe not an entire block, but four, five phases.
But if. I don't think we have any posted that way.
We don't have anything posted, but there is.
Okay.
But yeah, a, a few on the ends of the block even that are half-hour only or something, so people can get in and out. That'd be helpful.
Well, if I remember right from the last meeting, it's some, a couple of people called in on Zoom and I think people called me, I think, I think Ben called me about it too, parking in the yard, in your own yard. Technically, you can't do it. I mean, you know, there's people that park their camper in their shed yard in the summer or they park in their backyard if they have an overflow, so a trailer, which is supposed to be through the garage. So you're not parking it on grass and.
But it's my grass.
Yeah.
So I can't park my camper over the weekend.
That's kind of my issue. It's like, my garage is on an alley. My backyard is on an alley. I park my trailer, just my two trailers, behind my garage, beside my garage, right next to the alley, but now that's saying I can't park it.
Yeah.
I'm saying you can.
Well, it says that I can help with money to either pay it or do whatever here.
Throw some bricks down.
My old house, I parked in the backyard every single day next to my garage in the grass.
Parked there for eleven years now.
Yeah.
And, and we've given that as an answer, but I don't think we allow any new driveways of the concrete. We don't allow.
No, we have ones that aren't paved now that should have been paved ten years ago.
So any, any crushed rock or gravel or.
To the street, we allow?
Uh-uh.
Oh, not to a street, no.
No, I.
But, um, to answer your question, like on the side of your house, if you threw some gravel down there, that'd be totally fine.
I get that. Okay, so you're talking about putting, well, updating it, doing whatever, you know? So what would that take effect, I mean?
Well, it wouldn't, it wouldn't take effect during the mo, the winter. We, we wouldn't expect you to move everything out, clear the snow, put in improved surface and then move everything back. I mean, we're going to give, we're going to give people flexibility and time to adjust to things.
So like, there's a bunch of people around town that.
Oh, yeah.
That's where we're so, to come up with either a new place to put it or the ability to, even if it's a couple hundred, two hundred bucks worth of gravel, I mean.
It takes a while, yeah. Well, and my whole issue with it, if you can do it in the homeowner, I'll be, it'd be selfish about it is, if, I don't want my whole yard, if I need, if I don't have room to park and I want to park my camper there for three months in the summer, I don't want to put gravel in my yard. I want to do it. I mean, because it looks like hell. I mean, I'm sorry, it does. I mean, if I wanted to limit in the whole gravel yard, I'd do it in Arizona. I mean, it's just, I get the purpose of it. I really do. Because we're trying to prevent, we're trying to prevent people to have all their junk parked in their backyard or in the front yard or in the side yard. But that's what we have nuisance abatement for. I mean, so we're going to, do we go out and nitpick Steve because he doesn't have his camper sitting on gravel or do we go after me because I've got fourteen junk cars in my backyard or in the front yard? I, I, I don't get the purpose of it. I really can't wrap my head around the whole, it's got to be on improved surface. I'm, I, I don't know who lives there. I can't remember. I talked to him a few times on the new W Avenue. I'm going to use that for an example. When we put in W Avenue, well, that wasn't a street forever. And there was somebody that lives on the end of Tenth Street Place. I don't remember who it is I talked to.
Two campers that are out there and two of them of those are perfectly fine sitting right there.
And they're sitting in the grass. Well, according to this, we're in violation.
Well, actually, one of them was improved surface. They just, the grass went through it.
Okay, but you, you see my point?
Yeah.
You know, and, and I don't, there's nothing wrong with it. It's not junky. It's, it's not, I drove by.
I mean, there's nothing wrong with a, a camper sitting right next to your garage either.
In the grass.
No, in the grass, but the, the issue is some of the campers that are parked right in front, like on the front yards and they have been for several months and we have no recourse action to do something like that, so.
Well.
Why can't somebody park their camper in the yard? That's kind of what I'm moving back to a little bit is, I don't know how to put this that well, but our taxes keep going up and our ability to do what we would like to do with what we supposedly own keeps going down. And I don't want my yard two W. I don't want junk cars sitting in the front yard and things like that. But I've been parking back there by my garage on the grass, like I said, about years now. It's not all two W. If it's wet and it's hurt, I don't put my stuff in and out, like whatever's sitting there, I try really hard not to, because I don't want it rubbed up. We've discussed multiple times trying to put some, or paper or gravel or whatever. Obviously, it's not happening. Hence the reason I'm. I think this conversation, but it's still, that's the thing is, you, I, I don't always have something there. I have something there plenty, but do I want a big gravel junk or paper junk or cement and junk? Because at some point I would like to put another garage there, so whenever I put there, I tear out. Trying to stay up to do something like that. So, not the putting crushed gravel down, you know, a couple dump trucks or whatever, a dump truck full of gravel, a couple hundred, few hundred bucks, whatever it runs anymore, but I'm going to tear half of that stuff back up if I get a drive, those kind of things. I realize that's my problem, but it is.
Yeah, and I, my just whole problem is that, Aaron said it, big brother earlier, you know, and I, I agree with you that we should be able to, you know, should we have a bunch of gravel driveways going to the street? No. We, we, you know, a new driveway, that's the rules. We have that, but if it's, I don't know, we're just, I, I, I totally get the whole theory behind it. But that's why I say, that's why I think we have a nuisance abatement if it's a problem. I mean, if it's junk, full of junk, we're going to go at it full of junk, but, and I can't think of his name. He does detailing on Second Street. He, his wife called in the last meeting we had.
Yeah.
Uh, anyway, he's got a two little trailer sitting in his backyard because I drove by it after she passed. Looks okay to me. I mean, it's a big yard, a little trailer parked back in the corner of the yard. You know, he parks his detailing trailer on the street. Most of the time he puts it in the driveway, because I drive by there a lot. Once in a while he's got it in the front yard, but I noticed when he had it in the front yards because he didn't want to be in the way when we were piling snow, so. And he had three trailers sitting in his yard, and it still looked fine to me, but does he wanna haul a bunch of gravel clear down the hill in the backyard, or? I don't know, I just, I just have a little problem with that, with that one, and I don't know what the right answer is, but I think we're.
And I guess my question is, complaint-wise through the years, I would imagine the bulk of those are probably front yards that staff hears about.
Yeah, front yards, cars in front, parked in front yards.
Most of the things we've heard are about side yards and backyards.
Why do cars on blocks in the front yards look different than your camper sitting next to your garage? Or, is yours a camper, or trailer or something?
Regular, like a utility trailer.
Yeah, but it's not sitting in the front yard.
No, and I don't want, I mean, that's the same thing, I understand.
And that, and that's not, that's not the problem, the problem isn't, you know, the, it's the complaints that we get on the people that park in the front yard. And it's not the, it's not when you're parking in the front yard when it's snowing, we don't, we don't expect you guys to. Drive somewhere else and rock home if it's snowing, we, we plan on people parking on their yard when it's snowing, I mean, we expect that, but. It's, it's when we get the complaints from all the people that are parking their, their vehicle right on their front yard. And there's, I mean, even on my block, I've had complaints of people parking on their front yard, and I, I. I mean, I, I've had a couple neighbors that have done it in the past as well.
And depending on the property, I mean, we've discussed that before, depending on the property, something you don't have in backyard, or, you know, it's just, you can't get at.
Right, and they don't even have a driveway, you know, and that's why, and that's why it's okay to park on the yard when it's snowing, because they don't have. A driveway, you know, so, I mean. You know, I think a lot of these concerns are valid, and I think we can figure out, you know, a way to, to work with it all, you know, and, and work around it. And I know if we don't have something, then it's hard for PD to enforce, a lot of people that are, just parking their car.
What I was gonna say, you can't enforce it, because what you have currently on the books is junk vehicles. And, we're not talking about junk vehicles, we're talking about vehicles that are operable, so there isn't a, there isn't a nuisance mech, mechanism to address that. Um.
Do we need to be more specific and say, front yard?
Right.
And there should, we're stressing out the yard, yeah, it sounds like.
Yeah, cuz I live on a. It's an improved surface, but we do park next to the house on a paper area, some of the cars sit next to the house, you know, but.
I think that's, I think we could definitely. Try to tweak it a little bit, I know we have to do something so we can enforce. Yeah. Everything, you know, I mean, to a certain point, but also, I, pardon me, thinks I, you know, our PD is really good at not being. Say, they're not gonna drive around just looking to write somebody a ticket cuz they're parked in the yard, I think they got other things to do, but it's, I mean, I think it's. Probably a hundred percent, wouldn't you say, Chris, maybe a hundred percent complaint-driven, you guys? I, I'm guessing when somebody drives by and sees a camper sitting next to a garage, they're not doing a U-turn screeching, uh, uh, almost swore.
Well, it's legal.
You know, the point that we had is maybe a camper sitting on the street for weeks at a time. You know, we don't, we haven't gotten a complaint of a camper or trailer sitting in the backyard by a, by a, um, a, a garage, but, you know, it's. Maybe I'm making too big a deal of it, but I'm just, I'm just.
It is complaint-driven, and there's five chemicals that I can think of in town right now that have sat there for. Almost my entire career, five years, and we have nothing on the books to relieve you of that issue now.
Whether in the front yard, or the side yard, or backyard?
It's both, so, and what I'm taking from this, the majority of the people here that have the trailers that have the issue with it. Use those trailers, right, so they're operable.
Business pleasure.
Or what have you, it's the issue of the ones that have been sitting there that. Have not become a permanent structure, more or less, tires are flat, things like that.
Oh, I can think of a couple too.
Like the neighbor we discussed right next to me, that, that, uh, the house got repossessed.
Yes.
Was on the.
Yep.
Shortly before that, he had some of the all-in a camper in the backyard, there were multiple cars in the front yard, multiple cars in the backyard, and the hell of a fifth wheel camper. That he had milked, and it was half collapsed, yes, and it, now, it's all gone now, but it's up. A mole, and it actually blows into our yard still every time the wind picks up, but, that would be. More what I think you're trying to get at is, literally, literally junk vehicles shattered across the whole yard.
Correct, the campers that people are living in.
Wouldn't those fall under junk vehicles then, and the nuisance take care of that?
Not all the time, no, all the time.
But some of these cars were sitting there from the time we bought the house next door, and when they got evicted. They started moving the cars, amazingly, the stuff hadn't moved for eleven years, fired up, I mean, I don't know all of it did, but a lot of them, I watched it rip.
Yeah.
And I could, I, there was no way I thought that thing moved, you know, so I'm like, is, is it junk? Because it, he could go out, he was able to fire it up, and it, or it drove.
It's shockingly hard to enforce junk vehicle ordinances, I'm surprised.
But it sounds like it's more of an issue of defining storage, you know, and there's some other places that we've talked about. Those temporary storage units being, it's, you know, in, in a yard or in the driveway as people are transitioning and stuff, how long is too long? But this almost sounds like, uh, defining storage would be more helpful than describing where the. Vehicle is being stored.
Yes and no. There's, yes, uh, families are growing, obviously, Nevada's fairly young, overall, everybody's, you know. Two to three kids, more or less, that's almost five vehicles, uh, needed at one time, except for me, I'll have six, so. So, yeah.
Yeah, I'll run this for you.
Yeah, I get it, I would too, and my wife does appreciate it, but.
I don't know, I just don't know if we can find some common ground that works for everything or not, just that's why I'm bringing it up, yeah. No, it, thank you for bringing it up, yeah.
Is there a way to type into re, the registration? Who can mark that storage, if I'm going to put a truck in the storage, cuz I'm not using any of these specs, whatever. Presser's office, my angle, my angle. And then I just show you, and then there's a, it's actually teaching to show us the storage.
Yeah, cuz if you ran that license plate, then they would know it's a storage license plate.
Yeah.
Or you're just looking at legal definitions, you mean that.
Yeah, that's excellent, sorry, so I'm gonna ask this question, does that mean a storage vehicle can just sit on the front yard for? Ever? No, I. Instead of storage, I'm thinking maybe that's the buzzword we need to be using. Because if it's storage, then it's like found a place to store, then it came.
Part of that is time, and part of that is space or place.
Yeah.
Now, what's the most objectional part, objectionable part of that, is that, is it because it's in the front yard? Or is it because it's been there too long? Well, right, exactly, but if there's a definition of a vehicle in storage, then we can maybe. Step it one way or the other, because I assume that that definition has, I don't know anything about a storage definition, but it seems to me that it would have at least those two components. Because of, those, both of those, time and place, is what I'm hearing here.
I will, just so you, I mean, just so you know, some of the scenarios that we deal with, with. We've never had an ordinance like that, but people will just move the car to the street. For a couple of days, and then they'll put it back on the other side, and they'll swap, it becomes like a giant ring of whack-a-mole, they just keep moving the vehicle. So it becomes very hard to say, well, that is been stored there for, whatever, a week, right, say a week is your timeframe. Well, it won't, because they'll move it, and it'll be, unfortunately, as everybody up here knows, you create ordinances. Typically for bad actors, nobody in this room has any of those people, because you guys are all here and concerned, so, that's the problem.
My question is, 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 you know, people talk about how it affects them, and this is what I'm trying to do, and. Um, moving them as the storage, and what it'd be those, my question would be more to the property rights, people that own the property. What should they be allowed to do, and not be allowed to do? You don't like the way it looks, but.
I think we have to establish a minimum standard, and what that standard is, is what we need to discuss here, and what these rules need to work towards.
And also how it affects quality of life, the people that are around you on a regular basis. I mean, I, I kinda, it's maybe not a good analogy, but it's like making sure you keep your yard mowed, if you don't mow your yard in Nevada, you're in violation, and city mows it, and. And then what happens if you don't mow your yard, you get critters which go over to the, your neighbor's property. All sorts of stuff, it creates a broken window theory.
I know, I know you guys are working on this real hard, but I keep thinking back to why are we trying to reinvent the wheel? When there's other towns that have dealt with this before, I know a little town in Union with four hundred people, we had the same problem when I was on the council. And somehow, I wasn't there when they wrote it, but they wrote something to where any council member. Any deputy could walk up to the house, and they would get rid of all the junk in that yard, there was none of these questions, it was really easy to enforce.
But I don't think that's legal now, you can't just walk up to someone's property and take something away from them, I mean, that's.
No, I'm just saying, they had an ordinance written, I'm sure there's other towns, bigger and smaller, that have had this same problem, that have figured out a way to solve it. Without having the problems that we're discussing here.
Well, we've consulted with the legal cities, and we will continue to work with them, because you're right, there are definitely models, and. We just needed to hear more about, you know, kind of, are we moving in the right direction with these changes, so.
And Mike, to what you're, you're saying, you're right, there are a lot of other communities that do this, and. A lot of the, a lot of communities in Iowa, they, they take from each other's commu, communities, so. And I think you'll be surprised that some of the models are out there probably aren't legal, yeah, you're just doing it, and nobody's ever questioned it. Yeah. Be careful with, too, so.
Oh, one last question, so we're talking about, like, where I park is off the alley, she was asking me, and I'm not really sure with that. So like, we can't run a gravel driveway off of a paper, like, in front of my garage has to be paved off of the actual street. With that, but alleyway, I would assume it'd be different, it's not technically the same street, my gravel behind it, beside my garage back there. Necessarily have to be, but it's like a new.
You could do. Yeah.
Is a alleyway gravel.
Yes, absolutely.
And for feedback.
I'll be quiet, man.
A good discussion, so if there's any other feedback, feel free to go up to the mic. Well, if there is no other feedback, we can conclude the work session, and staff can keep working on some language changes for next time. And can we have both a budget workshop and an ordinance one next time?
Uh, the ordinance one, we're basically, um, I mean, we can do it next time, or we can put it off until February, but, uh, we were, we're going to have. Brenda, I don't think she's here anymore, Brenda was going to talk about some of the housing studies, and some of, um. Some different type of tools that tenants and landlords might, that might be available, and then, um. Ryan was gonna go over a presentation that he created over, uh, kinda like what not to do as a, as a city.
Just for time purposes, it might be good to kick the ordinances to February, so we don't have both budget and. Ordinance.
Jordan gone, that's probably.
Yeah.
The next, little bit.
So, cuz I think Marlon's may have posted about, in the first article about the twenty-fourth, so we'll have her get something out. Verifying that budget will be the twenty-fourth of January, and we'll kick ordinances into February.
We got our copies of this for everybody to be on the scene.
That's like I was gonna say, cuz like most of the folks here don't have what we're looking at right now. We can, we can make copies and set them out there beforehand, that way you guys can grab them and read them during, uh. Wouldn't it be possible, I was gonna say, wouldn't it be possible to do it, just in four weeks? Um, to make sure that they're able to access it ahead of time, too, so they're not just looking at it for the first time when they come in.
The, the most current version will be in the next, that packet for that meeting.
Okay.
For sure, and I don't know if there's a, is there a place to post it before that?
We have, on the website now.
Yeah.
There's a little work about. It's on the website, and we can put the updated.
Sure, okay.
Everybody clear, clear where we're going from here? No, we'll pick ordinances into February.
We're just gonna do the presentations and stuff.
That way we can do it, do that both right.
Yeah, that, yeah, that'd be great.
I would like to have Mickey shieldsens with the legal studies, in response to that. Demonstrating some of the other models of other communities and answering, I mean, he's got the good, the bad, and the ugly in his backpack, so.
Okay, sounds good, well, it's been a good process, so, we'll go ahead and conclude this evening, and wanna thank everybody for coming out again and providing. Feedback, so we make sure we get the right answer at the end of the day, so we appreciate it very much.